Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of Monday, April 3rd. All of our council is present. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is to review tonight's council agenda. So, council, I know we just went over this a few days ago, but any questions regarding anything on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Mr. Summers.
I had one. Oh, yeah. Mike. Mr. Brady, on item 4G, I don't have an issue with this specifically, but it's, why are we suddenly responsible for spraying the weeds along the State Route 24 and what looks like an increasing number of access points and egress points from the US-60? Is this getting shifted to us?
The answer is yes. As we enter into new intergovernmental agreements with ADAT for different projects, they are seeking to have us take on some basic maintenance.
So, they're shifting what they used to do to us?
There are areas of the city, say, the 60 is a good example, where we don't maintain that ADAT right-of-way. We're working in discussions on a draft intergovernmental agreement that will cover all of the existing interchanges, but for new interchanges and for the freeway extension, in particular on the 24, we did take on some additional responsibilities.
Would we anticipate that more of these interchanges are going to be shifted to us or are these just new interchanges?
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah.
That's a conversation that's continuing.
Discussions that will be required to take on.
Yeah, but anything new, we're going to take on responsibilities that we don't have on the existing system.
So, new for sure and existing possibly.
It's a work in progress right now. ADAT is part of the diamond grinding of the US-60, is also going to be doing some work on the interchanges themselves. So, we think we've come to a place where we might have an agreement, actually. Obviously, we'd have to come back to this council to approve the intergovernmental agreement. But anything new, we are taking on some things we haven't done before.
All right. I just noticed it because it's shifting responsibility and there's a fiscal impact to us now that we're going to have to maintain something new.
What I would add, council member, is that if we had accepted ADAT's original proposal, we would have taken on a lot more, and we pushed back pretty hard on that.
RJ, play a defense.
Thank you for doing that. Good luck in the future. Thanks, RJ.
I have to say, I do occasionally sit at interchanges, coming off of the freeway, coming on to city of Mesa streets, and notice a lot of weeds. I mean, whoever's responsible, whether it's us or ADAT, is not doing a wonderful job at certain spots.
Mayor, yes, there are certainly, if you were to drive our streets, you can tell when you leave ADAT right-of-way and enter city right-of-way generally, just by looking around.
Yeah.
So, at least it'll be a benefit, which should be cleaner.
Yeah, and again, that's something that's work in progress. One of the things we started doing a while ago, and I'm going to get too far off on a tangent with the agenda, but we started sweeping the ADAT overpasses and underpasses because they weren't doing it. And literally, our contractor was picking up the brooms and driving through the ADAT right-of-way and then putting the brooms back down, you know, so that didn't make sense. But they really wanted us to go much further than we were comfortable doing, so there's still discussions to be had.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, other questions regarding tonight's agenda?
I just had a quick question on 5A, the Rio Reimagine.
Yes.
Is that coming, is that on pause and it's coming back? Or, I sort of got the idea.
It's just been on a very long journey.
Okay.
And so, I think, but it's moving in a good direction, where now we're trying to staff it up and get some more meat on the bones as far as moving forward with some specific plans. It's been moving through the region. At one point, it was known as Vaucher Lay, and the city of Mesa was working with our Corps of Engineers and others. Now, ASU has taken on a role, and then I think eventually it's going to go to the Maricopa Association of Governments. But this funding allows us to participate with other communities that benefit from the development of this, of the Rio Salado area. So, I think it's a good place for us to be. We need to be involved in that discussion. We're excited about the potential development and opportunities that would follow from there. So, I guess it's, I don't know if it starts and stops, it kind of, somebody's always working on it, I think, and discussing it, but there's just so many different groups involved, that I think it's just kind of pulling everybody together.
And is this the first time they've done an intergovernmental agreement where they've had a representative or a baser?
That sounds right now. Is that correct? Is that what you understand?
That's correct. This is the first time, based on the statement of intent that was basically approved back in 2018, the goal was for all the communities to work together to find or identify ways of moving forward in a collaborative effort. So, this is the first IGA that is specifically for hiring the personnel that is going to coordinate all those activities.
And was that, I'm sorry, the term was like four or five years or something like that?
It's four-year.
And then?
So, it's right now, the duration is four years. That's what they anticipate, and after four years, they will evaluate to see the status of basically the project, the coordination, and see what will be the need to carry on or move in forward.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions regarding tonight's agenda?
Ask.
I'm just curious, like, what is, how come this falls under you?
That's a really, no, you can't ask that question.
I didn't want to answer it either.
This is actually long-range planning. So, long-range planning, basically where they coordinate with various planning of the waterways. So, this is really falls under city planning. But in addition to that, we coordinate with transportation, parks and recreation and all that, so there's various coordination. But it's a citywide effort, so.
But that's a good point. Right now, it's in the planning stage.
Okay.
But I think that's where it falls here. And also, his predecessor volunteered to take this on.
Oh, so then it fell to you. Well, because I, you know, I'm always trying to make sure I know which departments do what, and I couldn't make the connection on this one, so I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, it's not always easy, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions regarding tonight's agenda? All right. Thank you. Hearing on item 2A on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and to provide direction on the Transportation Department budget. So, RJ, welcome back.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Nice to see you again. Again, RJ is leader with the Transportation Department. To my left is Eric Gaderian, Deputy Transportation Director for Traffic Engineering, and to his left is Orlando Otero, who is our Deputy Director for Field Operations. We are pleased to discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. As always, if you have questions, please jump in and ask as we move along. I won't read the omission statement, but in simple terms, we plan, design, and operate and maintain a high-quality, multi-modal transportation system for the city. Our objectives are relatively straightforward. First is maintaining what we have, and you'll see that come out in budget adjustments that we are seeking, is maintaining the existing infrastructure is always our highest priority, monitor and address safety, and that's something that Eric's team does through the Traffic Studies Group of looking at areas where, you know, maybe we have high accidents, do we get requests from a school or a neighborhood? Either we'll work with our engineering department to implement improvements, or sometimes we partner with Orlando and his team and have done some projects in-house, whether they be crosswalks and that sort of thing. And then keep up with development. Obviously, we have a lot of developments still happening in the city, both new development, primarily in southeast Mesa, but as well as redevelopment occurring throughout Mesa, and that includes working with our engineering department on projects that are within our Mesa Moves Capital Program, but also we have plan reviewers on staff that review new developments or redevelopments for traffic impacts, and we work closely with NADA staff in Development Services. Some performance measures, pavement condition index, or PCI, is measured as zero to 100. 100 is a brand-new street, so we've been pretty consistent. There's a blip in the data, which I can't explain going back to 2016, but generally, we've been pretty consistent in terms of our overall average PCI score. But part of keeping up with that goes to some other items we'll talk about in the presentation as we move along. Streetlights, this is converting our existing high-pressure sodium system to LED. Although it shows red, that's only because this is a quarterly measurement. Overall, we're actually ahead of schedule. We've got about 45,000 streetlights in the city, and we've converted a little over half of them to the new LED technology. The measure will actually slow a little bit or the outcome, because once we get onto the arterial streets, the busy streets, for safety reasons, we always have a follow truck. But our staff in keeping up with our other performance measure, which is repairs, are doing an outstanding job in converting the system to LED.
RJ, I'm sorry, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Back on the all-streets pavement condition index.
Sure.
Is that a national standard?
It is.
Okay. And the target is, how do we determine our target?
I could actually sit down and show you. I can generally explain that. 100, again, is a new street.
Right.
And then we can actually show you the lifecycle of the street, of when we do various treatments. So, a new street is 100. A few years into the new street, we'll do what's called a fog seal, which is the lightest application that we do. So, the PCI has dipped a little bit, that'll raise it back up, and looking at a 40-year lifecycle for streets, there's different applications we do at different times. At some point, those applications are no longer going to work, and when the PCI drops below 50 is when a street becomes eligible for resurfacing. And that's where we work with Beth Huneen and the engineering staff. We identify the projects, and Beth and her staff implement or administer the overlay program.
Again, is that a city of Mesa when it drops below 50?
Yeah, so, RJ, across the entire city, right?
Yes.
From the oldest part of the city to the newest part of the city, on average, we're trying to maintain above 80. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, is that, I think that's what you, is that what you?
Yeah, I was just curious, if the city sets the 70 target.
Yes, we set the 80, so that's, we create an internal standard. I don't know how that compares nationally.
I could do some checking, but I have to believe that we compare favorably on a national level. Our target is actually above 70, but we're at 80, and we want to stay there, you know, so, but as Chris points out, you know, this could be the newest street in Eastmark averaged against the oldest street, you know, someplace else in Mesa, but, and then between Orlando's maintenance staff and then working with Beth Huneen and her staff, it depends on what we're doing as to who's doing the work. Streetlights we discussed, graffiti, we had a little blip, but our goal, and we're just about there, is within one business day of notice of graffiti. This is a high-priority item for our department. If you drive around Mesa, and if you see anything, please let us know. You can use the Mesa Now app, or you can let us know if you see something. But we, council, with the approval of this current-year budget, authorized the addition of a second graffiti abatement employee. Still waiting for a vehicle for that person, but this is very high priority for us. Actually, I've been out with our employee, and the bulk of the graffiti abatement does not actually come from the public. We just have people who know where it is. So, I would say about 30% is Collins or Mesa Now, but we know where the regular hotspots are. But if you see that anywhere, please let us know.
Ms. Duff, any questions?
I think I answered mine. I saw the 2020, I think that's just a mark worthy year, is assuming that 2022 is to the right, I don't know, is this graph all of 2020? What is the representation of the time period?
Good question.
It's an annual measure, so, no, this is, I'd have to.
This is a monthly measure.
It's a monthly measure, sorry. So, I'd have to go back. It's just going back in time, so I'd say this is probably taking us back to about 2018.
Monthly measure on the left side, but the other graph on the right side.
We had a dip, and that was with some personnel change.
So, is that an annual, what is the time period?
Well, it's a monthly measure, so if you're looking across the top, this is how we're doing month-to-month. So, we had, we, back in 2017-ish, when I first started with the city, we actually went from having a contractor do the work to bringing it in-house, which has been very successful, because you can see almost a straight line across and staying within that 24-hour measure. We had a staff change, and that explains the little dip you'll see on the right edge of the slide.
So, the right edge is 2022?
Most current, so it's 2023.
23?
Yes.
Okay. And 2020 is just the midpoint, I'm going to measure of time, maybe from 2018 or something, I'm going to guess. Okay.
We can refine this slide better.
No, I just have to kind of understand the time period.
Yeah, so historically, it probably goes back to about 2017.
Yeah.
Is the first measures, and the more recent one is probably going to be, was it going to be January, February on this chart?
They should take us through the end of February of this year.
That's the last thought, would be February 23.
We were going back and forth at the beginning with whether or not we were going to stay in-house or remain contracted, and again, I'm pleased to say that since we brought it in-house, we've been very successful in staying on top of it. The challenge when we had the contractor was they didn't want to come in for single issues. They wanted to aggregate them, so that kind of threw off the timeline. Expenditure summary. So, you know, working from left to right, you'll see actuals for last fiscal year running up to the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. We'll get into the budget adjustments that we're asking for, which primarily affect field operations, although there's one equipment request within Eric's group. I will note that, again, working with Beth Huneen and the engineering team, council last year authorized increasing the overlays budget from $10 million to $20 million, so we and Beth's staff have done a lot of work ramping up so that we can really attack that this year to hit that $20 million overlay forecast that we have. So, the increase from 67.5 to 73.9 million from 2223 to 23, I'm sorry, I got to go back, the revised budget, 72.6 to 73.9 is largely the staff addition that we'll talk about in a few moments.
And RJ, you can just speak to, just a reminder, the city council, all of this is coming out of the street maintenance fund?
So, the 90-some percent of our budget or higher is split between two funding sources. How we use our revenue funds, which is a mix of license fees and gas taxes or registration fees. The other part is coming from the three-tenths of one cent local street tax that the voters approved some years back, which is dedicated to street maintenance. And we're fortunate that we have that, because it allows us to do more, frankly, than a lot of other cities are able to fund. We have a tiny amount that we get when we do work in parking lots for other departments, but it's really pretty insignificant when you look at our total budget.
And I bring that up just because what'll happen is if we're not able to spend all the money on street overlays in one year, it just rolls over into the next year, doesn't get swept off anywhere. And so, we're really trying to increase our capacity on street maintenance, because just like sales tax has been coming in a little higher than typical, than we've, historical, sorry, we're able to, and you'll see some of that in the improvements that we talked about, but I just want, street maintenance, our goal is to continue to increase the number of lane miles that we're able to apply that application to. So, and that'll go back to the PCI eventually, too.
It will.
That as we've doubled the amount, or not doubled, but we've added $10 million more into the budget for street maintenance, and that's the result of just improvement in the sales tax allows us to adjust to that level.
But it is restricted funding, so.
Yeah, it's only for street.
We're trying to take as much back into the infrastructure as we can. But as Chris points out, we doubled the funding, but it doesn't double the lane miles, because frankly, costs have gone up. So, now we get into our budget adjustments. Please, again, ask questions if you have any. I won't read all the items, but right now, we rely on a single contractor to do all of our concrete repairs. This is not building new roadways or new sidewalks as part of roadways or paths. This is really day-to-day maintenance. And the challenge that we have right now with our single contractor and the single crew is that if you were to report a sidewalk heave on an arterial street, it can take as long as 30 days to get out and repair that, and we would like to cut that in half or better if we can. So, the thought is, is that we would create an in-house crew, and this is very similar to the model we use for asphalt repairs and others, where we have a core group of in-house staff that hit high-priority areas, and then we do larger projects with our contractors. So, the proposal is to add six full-time employees and equipment and lower those safety-related repairs from 30 days to 15 days or less. And again, it goes back to the funding, that the funding is there, that it can support this between HURF and the local street fund.
Ms. Spilsbury.
So, this is the first time we've, we're trying an in-house concrete?
We actually had an in-house concrete crew sometime before I started with the city. A decision was made to go completely contracted, so now we're coming back a little bit. It's something I've been talking about with Mr. Otero for a couple of years, again, trying to find that balance, you know, but, you know, when you, when I drive the streets, probably like you, when I see the barricades and the pink paint, you know, and the bump sign, it's like, ugh, I just wish we could get those done more quickly. And so, really, what we're going to do with the equipment, we're going to be doing small jobs, but the high-priority jobs, and leave the bigger jobs to our contractors.
So, we'll still be using the contractor?
We will.
But this will hopefully get to things faster? And so, six full-time employees is what you're looking for then to be able to do this?
And I think RJ said it correctly, is if we need a large project, a large, we can go through the process and formally procure that. It's these smaller ones that, they're not willing, you know, they're so busy in lining up these crews. It's kind of like going back to the streetlights. We kind of went through the same thing, we're replacing out the streetlights, it was the same thing, it was just easier for us to have our crews do it than to rely upon contractors. That doesn't mean, we certainly employ a lot of contractors for a lot of our big, long capital projects, where they're going to logistically put down a laydown, and they're going to be there for some period of time.
Okay.
Which makes sense for them. We can be nimble and move our folks around in a geographic area and get a lot of little things done quickly.
And so, also to reiterate, then, the money, you're saying we have this money?
Yes, this is all coming.
And the fund to use, so this is how you've decided will be a good way to use that?
This is coming out of the transportation sales tax.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, we meet with the staff from Office of Management and Budget several times a year to go over what they call the forecast.
Okay.
So, we're looking out a number of years to make sure we're not overextending ourselves from a funding standpoint. We're very comfortable we can do this. Within the transportation budget, I'll note real quickly, unlike some departments where the budget is more heavily weighted towards staff, I would say probably 30, maybe 30% of our department, maybe 40 goes towards staff, the bulk of our budget actually goes to contracted services.
So, everybody else would probably be flipped.
Hmm.
The departments would be flipped the other way.
So, this is a small change.
Yeah.
It's not really changing our model, you know, too much. It just, as Mr. Brady said, it allows us to be nimble, because frankly, the contractors want to come in and just do one, two-panel sidewalk repair. They want to come in when they have a bigger or more places to do work.
If it's making the streets safer and quicker and easier to get around, I mean, it's obviously worth it.
And we chose to use the kind of highlight as a pedestrian safety issue on this one, because it's typically, it's not the street itself, it's typically ramps, the sidewalks, the roots are pushing it up, or something.
But then it does, because then if the pedestrians have to go into the street, and then, I mean, it's, to me, it's a safety issue.
Or there's a mobility challenge, right, that are, you know, are in a scooter of some kind or something like that. Yeah, it's very high priority for us.
Okay, that's great.
How often do these things, I mean, how often does this, how often are you contracting for maintenance of sidewalks and these kinds of issues? Is it?
Year-round.
Every day.
Every day? That's what I was asking.
You could keep them busy every day. As you recall, it wasn't that long ago, we had a claim against the city for a buckled-up sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so, this just allows us to, we hope to address those kinds of issues.
And this isn't necessarily cost-saving, it's more of a timing issue. It's.
That's right. We would have spent the money otherwise, but now we can, it's timeliness.
It's timely.
We've referred to it as not saving money, but just being able to provide the service faster.
Is liability for that on the city, or is it on the homeowner?
Depends on how many times we walk by it before we decide to fix it.
Yeah, but is there liability for the homeowner for that property, too?
Depends, I don't know, I'm not going to point on that now.
Don't want to get into the weeds on this, but.
So, we have had a couple of claims on sidewalks. Also, we have to have reasonable notice, and then I failed to act within a reasonable period of time, and so, we're not paying out on many claims involving sidewalks. But obviously, we want to be able to say that we're nimble and responding timely, because that helps prevent future claims.
Isn't there also potential of claim against the homeowner or his properties?
So, it is possible, but we also, within right-of-way, we have a non-delegable duty to also maintain right-of-way, and so, you know, it's possible a plaintiff could bring a lawsuit against the adjoining property owner under another theory, but they rarely do, because we have a non-delegable duty and they know we have deep.
Doesn't happen much, it's possible, so this addresses that issue, too. We get it done faster.
Yeah, we actually worked with our contractor, hoping they could stand up a second crew, but that didn't seem to work out, so this is our approach to that. Paving equipment, this is a request, a one-time request to buy some larger equipment that our in-house staff will use on asphalt work. We found out recently, when we were doing some paving work up in the Lehigh neighborhood, that we were kind of stretching the limits of our, the equipment we had. So, we're not asking for staff, this is just allowing the staff that we have to do some larger jobs. But it goes along with what we were talking about with concrete, that we have in-house work, we also have contracted work, but this will allow better use or larger projects for our in-house staff to perform.
RJ, I'll just weigh in.
Yeah.
You know, watching, you did several miles of paving in the District 1 area. I appreciate that. I know that really the equipment was undersized for what you were doing, and so, it took a lot of time and effort by crews to be in there and do the paving work. So, yeah, a lot of those streets hadn't been touched in probably 40 years in the way they were treated. But anyway, yeah, having, having the, are you talking more the asphalt pair, it's wider, a wider machine to handle the width?
Bigger compact, you know, roller, larger paver, you know, just the ability to handle wider jobs, right? Is that the way to say it, Orlando?
Yes, it gives us more flexibility, you know, so we can do larger passes instead of having to do three passes. We can do two passes, it will be more efficient with this piece of equipment. And then, the pitch of the road, you know, for, gives us flexibility there.
I think you were doing like four passes on some of the streets there with, going back.
We learned a lot, you know, and it was the biggest in-house job we had done, and so this is kind of the follow-on to the lessons we've learned from that work.
Yeah, you trained up those crews to put asphalt down. I'm going to go back to concrete. I poured thousands of yard of concrete, so you're going to have a ready-mix truck?
We are.
For yourself, are you going to mix with a large mixer in the truck, or you're going to?
It's a ready-mix truck, but a smaller one. I call it a baby mixer, for lack of a better term. Go ahead, Orlando.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman.
A mini-mix, we call them.
That was our challenge when we had the crew in the past, was the short loads, is getting the short load. So, we're thinking of having a smaller ready-mix truck that will be able to take to the batch plant and get the load and bring it to these locations. I think it's going to help us be a little bit more efficient. So, there was instances in the past where we were waiting for the load, and we didn't get it, because it's just four yards of concrete. They want to bring us 11 yards of concrete.
Yeah. So, you're going to have a contract with the concrete contractor suppliers to?
Yes.
Put in the?
That's part of the materials, under commodities on this line, is that we're estimating about $110,000 a year in materials.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Signals equipment, this is to purchase an additional aerial bucket truck. We work very close with Mike and the fleet team, but with supply chain issues and that, it's a challenge not only to get new equipment in place, but to get parts for existing equipment. So, by adding this additional bucket truck, it'll allow us to make sure we can get out and do our signal repairs, which are directly safety-related. So, this is simply adding a bucket truck to our fleet. And lastly, I'm going to ask Jay O'Donnell to come up. Oh, you're good. Talk about Asian District Monument Signs. Jay?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nice to be with you. I'm Jay O'Donnell. I'm the Assistant Economic Development Director. Why am I here as part of transportation?
It's a cameo appearance by Jay O'Donnell.
This is the fun part. Before I get into the presentation about the Asian District Monument Signs, I just wanted to share a little bit of background, specifically with those members of council who may not have been here during the initial branding process of the Asian District and the launch of the Asian District brand. So, as part of the expansion of Mesa's redevelopment area, the, the recommendations that came out of that effort was to promote the Asian District as a really unique place and point of pride. And in the findings, it said that marketing that district was really an opportunity to elevate this district as a differential point for the entire region, and also to revitalize West Mesa. So, during 2019, there was a Steering Committee of stakeholders that was formed, and that Steering Committee worked with the Office of Economic Development and two marketing and branding agencies to create a new brand. The Office of Economic Development led that branding effort, and we're, we've also led other branding efforts, including the Falcon District, and we're currently working on the Broadway Corridor. Next slide, please. So, the, the new brand was unveiled in January 2020, which was really ill-timing, because it was right before the pandemic, no pun intended. We still promoted the Asian District during the pandemic, but it was a pretty low level. So, in 2022, we came back and really relaunched the brand. So, we changed out arterial street signs, added banners to street poles, we added traffic signal box wraps, participated in special events, and really just promoted the Asian District to new visitors and customers, and it was a very successful program. So, in 2022, we added murals to the district for environmental signage, and we now have four beautiful, large-scale murals in four different locations in the district. This was a private, public-private partnership with property owners in, in the district. And finally, the big splash that the Steering Committee worked to develop was these monument signs. And it was really conceived as, as finding strategic locations in the district that would immediately announce that you've arrived, so a gateway sign, if you will. And if you notice, the Asian District logo there on the screen is a tangram. It's a seven-piece, two-thousand-year-old Chinese geometric puzzle, which is, is symbolizing the different Asian cultures in the district coming together while still maintaining the individuality of each culture. Next slide. So, the monument signs were designed by the graphic design team who created the logo, and now we have a sign company who has recreated the monument signs and provided pricing for what it would cost to build and install two of them on Dobson Road. The monument signs were proposing that the city fund would be located on the east side of Dobson Road and the west. So, you can see with the little call-out map there that this is the sign looking north on Dobson Road, just south of the First Avenue corner, and the engineering has been completed, so we know where they can fit without disturbing any of the existing infrastructure. Thank you. And this is the proposed sign that would be the first thing motorists see on the right side of the road as they head south on Dobson, just south of Main Street. Both of the signs are large, iconic, they would be well-lit at night, and we think they're bold and dynamic. So, additionally, we're looking for the private sector to contribute to additional signage down the road. We have a couple of other designs that have been presented, one is a butterfly, another one is a dancer or a running man, but they're really, really cool signs. So, the, the two signs that the city's proposing, or that we're proposing that the city cover would be a one-time cost of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And it's, go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, we've done something, not with this design, but around the Falcon District with signage, we did something similar, is that correct?
We did. In the Falcon District, we had, we changed out the arterial signs, we also did banners and traffic signal box wraps, and then we also had three of what I will call monument or beacon signs in the Falcon District as well. Comments?
Ms. Spilsbury.
Um, two things, is, are they, they're turned in a slant, then they're not like perpendicular to the road, so you only see it go in one direction?
You can see it, because it's so big, they're, the way they're configured, they are about ten and a half feet tall, and then they're twenty-six feet wide, so it's a very large monument sign. I don't think you'll miss it necessarily, but it is angled slightly.
So, like, if you're coming south down Dobson, though, and this is facing the other direction, like, you'd be able to say that, or see that it says Mesa, you think?
I think so. We can get you a, a view, a perspective of it looking the other way, so you can see what it looks like.
It just seems super angled to me. Um, is, I, I haven't been around for like approval of these monument signs, and I, you hear like a lot of different opinions on certain monument signs, right, in the city, but is this, that's just a normal cost? Is that how much these things cost?
Yes, these are, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, substantial signs, you want something that's substantial enough that it's going to withstand the elements and all that, so this is not out of line.
And do the, do the actual letters light up, or are, are there lights on the sign?
Lights projected on the sign.
Okay, so the actual thing doesn't light up?
Internal illumination, but that was extremely cost-effective.
So, I really want to know how Vice Mayor Heredia feels about these, since this is his baby.
Thank you. No, you know, I think we, we've been working with the Steering Committee, with the stakeholders there, businesses. I think they've been very supportive on us adding these features that kind of announce the Asian District even further in this area, so. I think folks already know, are getting, we've gotten good media attention, we got good traction around the, all the eateries and grocery options there, but even further enhance kind of your at-the-Mesa Asian District area, right? Like this, these are, I think they look small here, but these are humongous, I think. And so, these will call out, I think, the, the, the attention and, and kind of as we build this area, to have more kind of walkability in the future with, I think, the potential streetcar or more transit options. I think having these, these types of signage and added features only add to the effect of, of a placemaking place, right, in our city.
Was the Asian District or any of those business owners involved in this? Like, have they seen it? They like it? They like the style and the colors and?
Yeah, we have a Steering Committee, you know, Maycom Plaza, various different businesses there, H Mart, along Broadway, closer to Broadway, so various different stakeholders that have businesses there have chimed in into, that's how we developed these tang, the tangram and those features. And as Jay mentioned, we are asking businesses there for additional signage to come up with funds to support that, and I think we have, hopefully, a good substantial amount now, and we need a little bit more, so we're, we're making calls and having meetings with, with the businesses there to see how we can pull funds to add these feat, these other features of signage.
So, the same sign, or just ones that go in with it, like tie in with it?
That go into it, that tie into us.
Okay, you mentioned what the other two were, like the running man and the?
Oh, that's what you were saying. So, ones that just tie, like, that would have the same color scheme or something like that? Okay.
Yes. You know, we have some, in the Fiesta District, we did that as well. We have branding there, you know, Falconville District, now the Asian District, and so, all of our districts need some type of this as well.
All right, and with that, just is the summary to conclude that, we are asking for one-time budget adjustment of just under three million dollars, and then ongoing of six hundred and forty thousand to support the in-house concrete crew. And with that, if you have any more questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Heredia?
Going back onto the paving discussion, have we, I know we've tested paving, I, I don't know, kind of substance that I think, looking at the future as costs increase, has anything worked as far as any innovation around paving streets?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, you may recall a couple of council meetings ago, the council authorized joining the Southwest Asphalt Consortium, that's being headed by Arizona State University, and the goal really is to look at pavement design, you know, from a cost-effectiveness standpoint. So, more to follow. We have a very passionate pavement management supervisor that works for Orlando, who is always, and I mean always, looking for new techniques. If you have three or four hours free, he'd be happy to explain how asphalt works. But, but in all seriousness, we have tried some things, you know, Cool Pavement's one, you know, you may have read, Phoenix has some challenges with some of the product they used. We tested that same product in one of our parking lots, and I'm glad we tried it in a parking lot and not in a neighborhood, because it didn't hold up. You know, so it's, it's a work in progress, but we are, we are always looking at opportunities for increased pavement life. One of the things we talked about is that on some of our arterial street projects, that we do what's called cold-in-place recycling, or cold-in-place?
Yeah.
Yeah, recycling, where we literally mill the surface of the street and then put it back down on the streets, so there's, there's a sustainability component to that, but it's also cost, and, you know, so these are the types, I, I think Mesa's a leader, but we're always looking for new opportunities.
Okay. And then on the LED, how, how long are we, you said we're halfway for, throughout the city on, on like, changing up the?
We have a seven-year conversion program.
Seven years.
I think we're in year, we'll be coming up on year three with the start of the new fiscal year, but I'm very confident we'll actually be ahead of our, the goal we set for ourselves. Now, as an example, where our staff came back and said, we can literally save the city millions as opposed to having a contractor come in. They said, we think we can, and we're doing it with our existing staff, so they're, they're a great group.
And once, if somebody complains about an outage and you notice that you need to exchange all the, the ones in the neighborhood, you still are doing that, or are you just fixing that?
Mayor, Councilmember, we will typically go into a neighborhood and take a look. So, if it's a minor repair, we might repair an existing light, but anything of substance, we'll take down the old light and put up a new LED fixture. We also patrol the neighborhood to look if there's other lights that are out, but we, we try to do our LED conversions in, you know, not just one-offs, because there's really a contrast.
Sure.
Between the new lights and the old lights, and so, yeah. But that's within our five-day repair turnaround that we have, that's our goal for that, for repairs.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor. This, just some clarification on terminology, so you're referring to the, it's a little over three and a half million dollars on the last page, it's called it for a fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget adjustment? But when I hear adjustment, I'm thinking it's this year, not next fiscal year. So, are you looking to add this to the budget for the next fiscal year, or are we?
Twenty-three, twenty-four is next year's budget.
Yeah, but adjustment is the issue that has me confused, so we're, we're just adding this to the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four budget request for approval?
Well, it's new, and it's new, and it will be in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay. The reason that was unclear to me is, we have a revised budget for twenty-two, twenty-three of seventy-two-point-six million. Your year-end estimate is actually about five million below that, so when I see estimate or adjustment, I thought perhaps we would pay for it out of the?
No, it's, but if you look at that last column where it says twenty-three, twenty-four, it's included in that one. No, in proposed, in the proposed.
So, this will be for the next, starting in July one for next fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay. Just need to have that clarified in my head. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Backing up a little bit, but on the sidewalk repairs, I know you do quite a few in the older part of Mesa, and thank you for all your work on that. In the historic areas, there's been in the past concerns about when it's torn out and had the old WPA markings on the historic markings and stuff like that. Are we doing anything to retain those? At that time, the contractor was, it wasn't, he wasn't, not he, but the, the company was not retaining them.
Sorry.
Are we able to do anything on that?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, Orlando, do you want to handle that one? I think we are.
So, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we do. We try to preserve those in place. If not, if we remove them, we, we try to?
We're keeping them.
We keep them, yeah, we're keeping them.
We actually cut out the, the seal back from the Works Project Administration, or, you know, back in the New Deal, you know, when a lot, that was how a lot of the sidewalks in the downtown were funded. We are actually, I'd have to check, but I think we actually have a stockpile of them, if there's ever a desire to use those somewhere. But we're also trying to make the sidewalk, since the example you brought up, because the standard we use today is different, obviously, than the standard we use that, you know, seventy, eighty years ago, you know, that we're trying to mimic the look as best we can. I mean, you can't change the color, right? You know, because the new sidewalk's going to stand out, but we are trying to maintain the historic character when we do sidewalk repairs.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
I was just listening to the conversation here, cutting, saw cutting out the WPA and then putting it back in the concrete, is that what you're doing? Or just, I was just thinking, just make a template of it, and then you could stamp it in your concrete, just like the WPA of old and call it good, but?
Councilmember, I'm guessing, I don't want to guess, so let us follow up on that.
Okay.
I can say, I, I have a historic building in downtown Mesa, and there's a new sidewalk leading right up to the square that has, I think it's like a nineteen-twenty's, you know, stamp in it, and I, it's very cool that we, we kept that, and it can help us tell the story of the neighborhood. So, I think that's a worthy, a worthy effort.
Council, any other questions for these gentlemen? All right, Mr. Brady, I saw you making a nodal here.
Mr. Smith is off, yeah, we're, Mr. Smith has offered up ten minutes, fifteen minutes for Jody to start.
Really? Okay.
And then we'll go to the executive session, is that okay?
All right, that's right. Thank you, you bet, if, if that's our, Jody. So, this is the, this is the, the first part of our transit presentation.
We'll just probably make it through the budget, and we'll bring, come back on the master plan later.
We'll come back for the transit master plan?
All right. So, let me, let me announce to you, Jody, item two B is a presentation and to provide direct, direction on the Transit Services Department budget, including an update of the Transit Master Plan. Welcome to have, pleased to have Jody Sorrell.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jody Sorrell, I'm the Transit Services Director, and I'm just going to go through our twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget proposal for this year. When it comes to public purpose, like RJ said, these are a lot of words, but really, our purpose is to provide transit options to the residents of Mesa, whether that, and that comes in many different forms. Our priorities this next year is going to be the Transit Master Plan. We received some specific, we received specifically eight hundred thousand dollars from the federal government for bus shelters, so we'll be matching that with the four hundred thousand in this year's budget to put up about thirty to forty, hopefully thirty to forty new micro shelters, which I'll talk about later. The Rio East Dobson Streetcar Study and the Mesa Connected TOD Study. So, just, and, and we just wanted to take a minute and clarify, because it gets very confusing when you're talking about the Streetcar Study and the TOD Study, so I wanted to specifically kind of call this out in, in a map. So, the, the solid black line is the Streetcar Study. That's the first phase, it's called the Rio East Dobson Streetcar, and that's one that we'll be initiating with Tempe and Valley Metro, probably sometime May or June. The dotted line is the second phase, which is in the regional transportation plan, working its way through, so that would be, that's part of that plan, and then the hash line is a potential future alignment. What you see is the, the dashed kind of outline around that, that is the TOD Study area. So, they're, they're two different studies, but they very much overlap each other. Then we want to talk about opportunities that we're working on, we're at, looking at increasing trees around our transit stops. We have a lot of places where it makes more sense to put in a tree, like next adjacent to parks, city-owned landscape, it might make more sense to put in a tree rather than a full-size shelter. We're going to install the micro shelters that were budgeted this year and use the outcome from the Transit Master Plan to drive transit increases. And our challenges are really the lack of regional funding past December twenty-twenty-five, and as we grow the shelters and our facilities, our staffing is going to become an issue. In transit, a lot of our, most of our performance metrics are all ridership-driven, so these are our light rail ridership, our fixed route bus ridership, they're starting to pick up what we'll call post-COVID. I'm not sure if we'll ever, if we are post-COVID, or COVID is just around in perpetuity, but you can see they're starting to increase, and we're, we're seeing an increase. The interesting thing is, our park-and-ride usage has not bounced back, and that's indicative of our express ridership. So, your express ridership is still at about forty percent of what it was before March twenty-twenty, so that's more employees working from home, maybe not going in every day. There's also been a lot of change in downtown Phoenix. During COVID, the state gave up five hundred thousand square feet of office space in downtown, so those employees aren't going back to work down, at a location. There's been also just changes in more housing coming in as opposed to businesses being located. And then, our paratransit and ride-choice trips, we like this one. Seeing paratransit in yellow is not a bad thing. Our goal is to get more ride-choice trips than paratransit trips, because ride-choice is a, it's a more flexible service for our residents, and it's a cheaper cost per trip for the city. This is our budget summary, and we wanted to kind of call out some specific things This is our budget summary, and we wanted to kind of call out some specific things in here because during COVID, transit specifically got, in every stimulus package, we got funding for transit. Overall, between fiscal year 2021, '22, '23, we got about $47 million worth of trans, worth of federal funding to offset transit. $30 million of that went specifically to services that would have been funded by the General Fund. So, when you look at the 2324 budget, it's more in line when you factor in, it's not such a shock if you don't have those COVID numbers to look at. And so, after this fiscal year, the COVID money will be, will be gone. We won't have any more. Uh-huh, yes.
So, on the 2122 actials, there's COVID dollars that we received on, for accessible transit? As a one-time expenditure, what was that in...
So, that was, that's money that went to offset our costs for paratransit and ride-choice. So, we had, we used, that money went, well, we used our, we had a combination of Prop 400 money and the COVID money to offset the city's contribution. So, it's offset the city's contribution to be zero for the remaining of the fiscal years, because we now have enough...
Oh, this is funding?
This is funding, right.
I was wondering, okay.
Right, so, but if you look across at accessible transit, we have enough PTF through the course of Prop 400 to fund both paratransit and ride-choice without having to have to ask for any general fund money, which we have had to do in the past. I always like to, even though these aren't funded by the general fund, I just wanna point out, in July, Broadway Road will transition from being funded from the city's general fund to being funded by Prop 400. And in October, we will extend Route 48 in Tempe that right now currently ends at Tempe Marketplace. That will be extended into Riverview, and that's to grow ride-transit ridership in that corridor to support the Streetcar Project. This is just a summary of how much, so you can see what we pay in total for our contracted services. These are net costs. So, the light rail has the expected revenues taken out of it. So, Prop 400 is very important to the city of Mesa and how we fund our transit, transit service with almost $30 million.
Jody, this does highlight again the fact that light rail is 100% pretty much locally funded.
Yes, light rail...
Supported, maybe.
Yeah, light rail operations and maintenance is, the rail cities are responsible for funding that. There is no regional funds to offset those costs.
But when we talk about bus, which includes the paratransit and the ride-choice, that's really shifted to now, most of that, all of it, but most of that is now being funded by the region, by the Prop 400 sales tax.
Yes.
Mr. Summers.
So, that begs the question, where are we in discussions with the state legislature on a Prop 400 initiative?
Yeah, I don't know that's a Jody question to answer right now. We could certainly get a briefing from our intergovernments, because I know that's an ongoing conversation and dialogue that we probably should have at some point, Mayor.
Yeah, I think Ms. DeWitt, Mr. Butler, and Mr. Nissan could give us a... It would change every day, probably, because it's a moving target. So, given that we have to do with the E-session, let's do, that's the question of the year. So, that's, we do need to have an update for council on that, but let's schedule that for another week.
I think she has one more slide?
One more slide.
And then, we could break, Mayor.
Okay.
And this is just a quick update on the shade program that we've been doing. Over the last couple of years, we've gotten money for, to add shelters. We've had, two years ago, we got some budget money to design the microshelters. This is a drawing of what that microshelter looks like and how it can be modular to expand. So, as we, as the bus ridership grows, we don't have to go put in a new shelter. We can just expand with what we have and use our resources as efficiently as possible. And that's it. Part two to be continued.
All right, thank you, Mr. Summers.
I'll just, because we're out of time here, I'm just gonna say that the thing that alarms me from a fiscal perspective is paratransit and ride-choice. We don't locally fund that, that's all Prop 400 money. The implication here is we isolate people who rely on the service, both for getting to food, but also to their healthcare. And that, if we don't fund this in some measure, either locally or through Prop 400, that's gonna shift to 911. So, it's just gonna be ambulance transports, and that's not, that's not efficient. It doesn't help these folks. So, that's something from a budget perspective, we're gonna have to look at. Thank you, Mayor.
Amen. All right, moving forward, item 3A is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of the committee, Transportation and Sustainability Committee. Is there a motion out of effect? Thank you, Ms. Billsbury. Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is the current events and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Billsbury?
Get through these quick. Thursday, I attended the Mesa Hispanic Network Lunch and Learn with Frankie and Carmen Heredia honoring Cesar Chavez. And I just was so impressed, and I think we're so lucky to have you guys. And I just wanted to say that, Frankie. It was really, really good, so I really enjoyed that. Thursday evening, Councilmember Duff and the mayor and I were able to attend our investitures, is that how you say it, for the new judges? For our new judges, which was really awesome to finally get them all officially and formally put into our court system. And then, Friday night was the Jefferson Rec Center Spring Carnival. We had a Tomorrow Mesa booth. That, and there was like, the whole time we were there, there was people coming up and actually answering the questions about the survey, which I was shocked, because I don't think I would do that if I was at a carnival. So, I thought that was impressive, they did a good job. And then, on Saturday night, the mayor and I were at, and other people from our city that went to support A New Leaf, their camaraderie gala, that was fun. And then, just one more shout-out. This Saturday is my Easter breakfast in my district, so bring your kids and grandkids. It's from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Greenfield Park with pancakes and all the things and an Easter egg hunt at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, that'll be fun. Who would like to go next?
Go ahead and go, I'll try to be quick. And I attended the investiture, as you mentioned, also that, was it that night? Yes. I attended a local first, Dining for Dreams at the Arancho. They have a commercial kitchen, and they run that program, teaching people how to be restaurateurs. And this is a dinner that they prepare, the restaurateurs, inspiring restaurateurs to prepare in order, it was a fundraiser for them. And soon, we'll, in next year or two, we'll have an incubator in downtown, and we hope to have those graduates opening their little mini restaurants here. On Friday morning, I attended the Mason Urban Garden Day of Service, Cesar Chavez Day of Service, to clean up the garden a little bit. Thank you to all the volunteers that showed up and everybody, it was a great event. Afterwards, I attended the Arizona Bicycling Summit, learning more about how we can improve our bicycling infrastructure. On Saturday, I attended tomorrow's Mesa Community Event in Washington Escobedo neighborhood. Thank you to Jeffrey Robbins and Angelica Guerba, Guervara. I always miss her last name, I apologize. And last night, several of us were at Coopstock, was, which is a fundraiser for the Alice Cooper Solid Rock Team Centers. And it was held at Los Sendas, a golf course, it was beautiful and very successful. And a lot of fundraising done there, so. And Saturday is the Reed Park Annual Easter Egg Event with Mesa Pedi, with the Fiesta Pedi.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just, I appreciated being at some of those events as well. Saturday morning, I was invited by the contractor who's doing the removing of the asphalt from the US-60 and diamond grinding the concrete to go out and kind of get up in close, up close and personal and learn more about that. So, I'd be happy to share that experience with anyone who's curious. But that's an interesting issue that we deal with at MAG and other places. So, I appreciated the opportunity to become more informed on that. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what is our schedule of future meetings?
We'll see you on Thursday morning at 7:30. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item 6 is to convene an executive session regarding the DeSilva litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Billsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. We will now go into executive session.